We are now at item 1E, comments from the audience on items not on the agenda. Pat, are there any requests to speak?
14.
Speakers will be called in the order that request was received. Please listen for your name and be prepared to approach the podium. Any comments on agenda items will be accepted during consideration of that item. Once the board has commenced deliberations on an issue, speaker cards will not be accepted. The board is very interested in your comments, but please bear in mind, the board typically does not respond to comments during this time on the agenda, as it is reserved specifically for public comments. Individual members may respond during board comments at the end. Additionally, the board does its best to support the public's right to address its elected officials. It is also important that the board conduct its business in an orderly and fair fashion, as provided in Board Bylaw 9323. In the event that an unusual amount of speaker card is submitted for any item, the board will hear up to 30 minutes' comments. In the case of non-agenda items, the board can, if it chooses, hear the remainder of comments after all business has been conducted. Further, this bylaw in part states, individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board. A speaker may not use the podium for purposes other than addressing the board directly. There are no further comments, a speaker will be considered to have relinquished his or her allotted three minutes. This means that speakers cannot donate their time to another speaker, which in effect can give a speaker more than three minutes. The exception is where non-English speakers require a translator. Mr. Naugh, will you please explain the light system?
Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Yellow light means you have 30 seconds left. And also, red light means your time's over. Board Policy 1312-1 outlines the procedure for anyone to file complaints against school district employees. Pat?
The first speaker is Ray Alexander, followed by Max Ibarra, followed by Leila Maliki.
Good evening, board members. I'm here today to express my disappointment in the tolerance in this, for the intolerance in this boardroom. For some time now, some board members, as well as other parents, have been disrespecting speakers who have opposing viewpoints as them. For example, last board meeting, Mr. Cruz decided to walk out of the, of the board meeting after voicing his distaste in the Big Queen Bingo fundraiser for Don Lugo High School. Not only did Mr. Cruz disrespect me, but he also disrespected every single speaker who was there that night. Our views may be different, but it doesn't give you a right to walk away or ignore us because you may not like what you hear from every speaker. By purposefully blocking out certain speakers, you are skipping over concerns of parents, students, and members of this community who deserve to be heard and have their concerns addressed. All that this does is encourage others to engage in inappropriate and disrespectful behaviors in this boardroom during board meetings, as you have seen in the past. With this being said, I am now going to address the Big Queen Bingo fundraiser at Don Lugo High School that was canceled. Though it was canceled, I know many different parents and students who are excited and planning to go to this event. Students and parents were given an overview of this event on the bingo website, allowing them to make an informed decision on whether or not they wanted to go. Those opposed to this fundraiser simply could have just made the choice to stay home or found another way to support Don Lugo High School, as this was a way to raise funds for the school in a fun way while also showing representation for the LGBTQ+ community who you are consistently trying to repress, repress. By canceling this event, not only did you take away a fun fundraising opportunity for Don Lugo, you also took away the parents' right to choose what to attend with their children and friends. This, my point is that you and many other parents who are against this event are all for the parent's choice until it comes to a topic you are opposed to. Then you want to ban it. With all this said, I have a request myself, that any board member on this dais, or coming onto this dais, who will allow their own personal beliefs to blind their logic and hinder our school district, rethink their position on this board. Because this job requires you to represent every person in this community without making us to come to your own personal beliefs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Max Ibarra, followed by Leila Maliki, followed by Cynthia Moran.
Good evening, board. My name's Max. I first want to start off by addressing student voice. Um, I want you guys to know that there are a whole lot of students who want to come and speak, but unfortunately, due to a whole bunch of different factors, whether that's transportation, or the fact that we're more likely to have evening shifts for our jobs because we have to attend school in the morning or in the day, um, just know that there are a lot of students who do want to come and speak, and that it takes a lot for a student to come up here and speak. Um, and I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to share my student voice. Mr. Cruz, at the, uh, you are elected, an elected official, and I am a student in the community that you were elected to represent. Part of representing a community is hearing that community and being a good role model for it. An important part of our community is the students. So as a result, you should be a role model for students and hear the student voice. You did not do that at the last meeting. No, at the last meeting, you interrupted President Gagne. You made a comment about a fundraiser. You left promptly and ignored calls to return. There were students in the audience that night. There were student speakers that night. I was one of them. And I am embarrassed by what I saw. Because we deserve someone on the board who's going to show the behaviors and conduct that students are expected to follow in the classroom every day. We know since age five in kindergarten that we're not allowed to interrupt our teachers. We're not allowed to leave out of the blue, let alone ex, uh, ignore the calls to return. Because we're supposed to be there listening to them, like you are supposed to be here listening to the community. Students deserve better. You need to do better for the sake of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leila Maliki, followed by Cynthia Moran, followed by Kristi Hurst.
Sorry. So I don't know how many times I must address the hostility towards students in this boardroom. Before I entered these rooms and saw these recordings, I had faith in the board. I had faith in these movements, I had faith in this district, and the people in it. And it hurts and pains me to see what I consider a safe haven be so belligerent, especially to its own students. Has anyone ever once thought that the same people you heckle, the same people you scoff at, the same people you spit on, the same people you talk about, are the same people that are friends with your kids? Please, I'm asking you, as the board members, to give students more su- support up here. Trust me, students know about these meetings. Students want to speak, but so many of them choose not to in fear of the backlash that they will receive, the aggression, the comments, and more. It's disappointing. Let me add a clear reminder what this district is serving. It is serving students. I think everyone in this room needs to understand the importance of these student, importance of these student voices. When you hear my voice, you are hearing so many voices. This isn't just a single opinion, this is so many people. I speak for those children, those students, that are threatened by what goes down here. I speak for those who aren't allowed to. I speak for those who need their voices heard. For the board members, thank you for the majority of you all supporting students, especially to Mr. Schaefer. I respect you so much, and thank you for your time on the board. But I specifically like to mention specific board members. Your passive aggression is disgusting. Although I said this last meeting, I want you all to hear it again. About a month ago, a specific board member had an uncalled-for comment when I talked to them, and they said that my heels were made by men, not women, along with mentioning about how my generation is going downhill. These comments were unprofessional, and just an example of the distaste I have and how disgusted I feel when I stand up here. It makes me sad. Us students deserve more. It's so sad to see that the adults chosen to listen to us, not listen. And for that, I ask you guys, please provide more student supports for students who'd like to come to the board, and please listen to us more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Moran, followed by Kristi Hurst, followed by Darlene Berg.
I don't know why I'm nervous, but school board meetings scare me. Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm actually here tonight to address board member Joe Schaefer. Um, I want to say thank you to our departing board member, Joe Schaefer. Public education is more than just the opportunity to learn basic math, science, English, and history. It's a platform for our students to reach their full potential. It can inspire hope for a new generation of leaders and provide a foundation for a successful future. The Chino Valley Unified School District's success exists in part because individuals like Joe Schaefer make informed decisions about the issues facing public schools today. He's exposed us to new thoughts and ideas, and the power of communication when it is used well. He has indeed put our students first, and I thank you for that, Mr. Schaefer. Thank you for serving our community with dedication and compassion. Your knowledge and insight has helped influence key district decisions through some very difficult times for all of us. Thank you for being fiscally responsible, providing responsible oversight, asking questions, and more importantly, offering solutions. Thank you for advocating on behalf of all of our collective interests in the district. Thank you for your solid and respectful leadership, while you served us as board president twice. The strength of your leadership helped the board to navigate the often daunting decision-making process on policy issues that affect our students. You made the difficult but necessary decisions. Thank you for your collaboration, cooperation, and communication with the city of Chino Hills. As a result, we were able to accomplish so many great things for our youth, Joe, like Los Renos Park. So we have influenced and helped our kids both inside and outside of the classroom with the collaboration between the district and the city. Joe, your board service will be marked with great passion, dedication, and commitment to the students of Chino Valley Unified and their families. It has been my absolute pleasure to work with you, Joe, and I know we have not seen the last of you in a leadership role in our fabulous community. You take care. Good night.
Thank you.
Kristi Hurst, followed by Darlene Berg, followed by Abe Dyke.
Good evening. Since tonight is the last meeting with the current board as it sits, I wanted to come and express my sincere appreciation for all you have accomplished this last four years, especially the last two and a half years. First, you all had to lead and make decisions no one else has ever had to make before. Thank you for putting the health and safety of all kids first, no matter the mistreatment you've received for it. Thanks to your decisions and work, CVUSD was one of the best-performing districts in the state post-COVID. In the last four years, this board and cabinet has rebuilt Chino High, started a biomedical academy, started multiple dual immersion programs, increased mental health services available to students tremendously, and so much more. Joe and Christina, these last four years, thank you for stepping in and truly focusing on the education, safety, and health of all students in the district. Thank you for not pushing political agendas into our district and to upholding the laws of our democratic system. Thank you for getting our district back on track by stopping the spending on frivolous lawsuits. You kept our funds with kids and supporting those who educate our future. Your focus has always been in the right place, and you are beyond appreciated in this community. Christina, your professionalism and grace these last few months especially has been nothing short of amazing. I greatly appreciate your intelligence and willingness to speak up when others would not. Thank you for being a role model for all students in this community. I am grateful to have gotten to know you these last few months, and know you truly care about this community. As someone who also struggled with infertility while I was a teacher, I know that being a parent is not a prerequisite to caring about kids. Thank you for sharing your experiences honestly. I know that you helped a lot of community members by opening up, and I know how hard that is. I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Darlene Berg, followed by Abe Dyke, followed by Misty.
Good evening. Uh, Mr. Schaefer, I'd like to thank you for your time, your service, um, for standing up for what is right, and for showing you care about these students. So I want to wish you the best of luck. I also would like to show my appreciation for President Gagne, um, for just this culture that you've created, the culture that everyone is welcome, uh, with the people that are so loyal to you. It's just one example of the good that you bring to this school board and the community. I'm in awe of how well you've put up with a lot of the hate and the threats. I'm sorry my group is late to the game, uh, but we are so honored to have joined this group of people that care so much about young people. Uh, you have made your mark and have an amazing team that continue to work towards freedom and equality for all religions, gender identities, sexual orientations, and ethnicities. It's hard for us to understand why certain individuals have been so loud against the LGBTQ+ community, against critical race theory, against religions other than their own. I commend you for working alongside some of these people. It feels impossible to understand where these folks are coming from with their beliefs when we are so open to supporting creating and creating environments where everyone is and feels welcome. We look forward to the day that we can all, all of us, come together and find middle ground for the sake of the young people and the teachers that we all care so much about. President Gagne, I thank you for being a strong female role model that I want my kids and all of our kids to see and experience. The kind of female role model that respects people of all types, all genders alike, and shows the balance of professionalism, intelligence, patience, and compassion that we could all learn from. You, President Gagne, are doing great things, and I look forward to future endeavors alongside you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Abe Dyke, followed by Misty, followed by Virginia Renteria.
Hi, my name is Abe, and I'm Christina's husband. So I'm here because this is the end of a four-year term, and I want to thank you, Mr. Schaefer, for your service on this board, uh, and for standing up for students, parents, teachers, teachers, uh, school staff, administrators, the whole bunch. It, it's been a pleasure to see you in action. But I'm going to say that I am very, very proud of my wife. I am very proud to be her husband. I'm proud of your service. I'm proud of your leadership. I'm proud of you for standing up for what's right, even when it has not been easy. I'm proud of you for standing up for students who have no voice. I'm proud of you for standing up for teachers, and staff, and administrators in this district who have been unfairly maligned far too much over the last four years. I'm proud of you to make the difficult decision to add 30 minutes of in-person learning for students to recover from the learning loss of COVID. This will make a generational difference for students in this district. Against opposition on this very board, you got it done and made a huge difference that will impact thousands of students' entire lives, because the weight of these decisions does matter. I'm proud of you for handling some frankly despicable behavior in this boardroom with class dignity, decorum, and grace. I'm proud of you for not spending money on lawyers but putting it to students in the classroom and teachers and staff. I'm proud of you for not treating being on the school board like it's a performance art, but instead, working not just here in the boardroom, but all the time to make a difference for students, whether it's writing a letter of recommendation, or working behind the scenes to make sure that new schools get built and new programs get started. I'm in awe of you. On a personal note, I do want to say that my family's fertility challenges have somehow been treated like a cruel joke at times in this boardroom. I find that to be completely disgusting and counter to the great community that I think that I live in. It's not a joke, but I am very proud of you, Christina, for sharing our experience with others, that it might offer comfort to those who are struggling with their own fertility challenges, because it is not easy. I know how much you care about this community. You were born here, you were raised here, you won the geographic debate to get me to come back here, and I am just so proud of everything that you have done. I know you didn't want to run for reelection, but you felt a need to continue in service, and I know that you're going to contribute in the future, and that whatever you do next is going to be incredibly exciting. I love you. Good night.
Thank you.
Misty, followed by Virginia Renteria, followed by Mike Krieger.
Hi. I'd like to play a short little excerpt. Hopefully you can hear this.
Teachers unions are definitely more of a political organization.
Oh, of course. Of course, I'm getting a phone call.
Than an educational organization. You have the National Education Association and the American Federation of Teachers. Both of these unions are political powerhouses. In the last 20 years, the NEA has sent over $200 million to politics. And the AFT, in the same vein, they've sent about $90 million. That's not including some of these left-leaning groups like Planned Parenthood, the Clinton Foundation, that are also getting money every single year from these groups.
And teachers unions, where do they get their funding from?
All teachers unions are funded by their members' dues. So everything they're sending to politics is coming from their members' pockets, from their hard-earned cash.
These are political activities and grants to advance progressive agenda. They have nothing to do with helping children learn. They have nothing to do with giving children opportunity. They have nothing to do with improving outcomes. And frankly, it doesn't have anything to do with improving teacher pay or benefits. For the teachers unions, it is about money and power. And we got an honest glimpse into this back in 2009. The top lawyer for the National Education Association, for, for decades, he talked about why the union was effective, and he said, straight up, "It is not because we care about children, and it is not because we have a vision of a great public school for every child. NEA and its affiliates are effective advocates because we have power." It's not because we care about kids. It's because we have power. It's because we have three and a half million members who are giving us hundreds of millions of dollars every year. That's what we are.
How are teachers and students affected by the unions, and why is this an important issue to be aware of?
The teacher unions are the ones that are often making the decisions without the input from a lot of rank-and-file teachers. As the unions largely control most of the school boards in America, I think one of the things that a lot of people don't realize...
I don't know if you heard that last part. Unions are controlling school boards. As of November 8th, that's not happening in Chino Valley. Our school board is controlled by the parents who voted. We want to take back public education for our kids. I'm sorry, but these unions, they started out back in the Depression, back in their 30s, 40s, 50s, for one purpose, and it has evolved into political agendas. Thank you.
Virginia, Virginia Renteria, followed by Mike Krieger, followed by Sonia Shaw.
Well, it was a great show last board meeting. I had intended to say something, but I will be, um, cordial. Um, yes, our school board is in dire need of a cleanup, and hallelujah, I think we're going to get there. There's a lot of talk about inclusion and all that. What about the kids? What about the parents that just want their kids to go to a classroom that doesn't have a gay flag on it? What about the parents at Don Lugo that don't want their kids to go to a drag queen show, or whatever it is? What about, what about them? What about all the normal kids that are being, all this is agenda of all this inclusion is being pushed on regular kids? We have young people in here, not a clue about property taxes, not a clue about survival. When you live at home and you're not in the real world, it's real easy to be, yeah, 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 I'm all political. But when it comes down to having your home, and your family, and seeing all the garbage, that's when you see parents step up, and I'll tell you, boy, we stepped up. Grandparents too, because we're not having this. Um, I do appreciate our board members. I am very happy to say, and there's a lot of good talk, but there's also some admissions. I mean, there was a certain board member that I recall called the police on one of the parents.
Did you get the facts straight about that?
Oh, I did. I did.
The speaker has the podium. The speaker has the podium, please, Mr. Schaefer. Ms. Renteria, please continue.
And, um, my, my, I'm going to make it short, because I just, I'm holding back what I really want to say. But all I will say is, remember when you did this? Now we're all saying, sayonara. Sayonara.
Thank you.
Mike Krieger, Mike Krieger, followed by Sonia Shaw, followed by Na- Naomi Minogue.
Good evening, President Gagne, and rest of the board and community. Uh, I'm Mike Krieger. I'm the president of Chino Valley Fire District. I came tonight, uh, just to remind everybody, it's the holiday time, to get it on the communities and on your schedule, that on December 14th, we will be doing the Make a Child Smile program, again in cooperation with the school district, the fire district, Chino Police Department, uh, the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department out of Chino Hills, and the Highway Patrol. It's a great opportunity for, uh, the underprivileged youth of our community that the school district identifies, to be able to buy some gifts for themselves and for their families, and I look forward to seeing you all out there for that. Uh, secondly, I would like to, uh, just say, uh, thank you to Joe and to Christina for serving, um, from one elected to another, um, regardless, uh, Joe certainly knows, because I don't always agree with Joe, uh, 100% of the time, uh, I don't agree with, uh, probably all of you, uh, often. Um, but it, it takes a lot to serve your community, to leave your families, uh, and to work relentlessly for what you do, and, um, you know, to stand up and serve, uh, means a lot. So I want to thank you, the people who, uh, who have served and are serving, the people who are about to, to serve. Uh, it's a huge commitment, and you all need to be thanked for doing so. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sonia Shaw, followed by Naomi Minogue, followed by Michael Apollinar.
Good evening, board. Dr. Enfield, community, cabinet. Um, before I start my, my speech that I actually had written, I wanted to say, today I met with, um, some parents at Ayala High School, and I was kind of taken back about the situation that they have with the pool. And I know that some of you may be leaving, but I would like for our board and our, and Dr. Enfield, for you to look into this, because we have students that are currently being forced to get dressed and get ready in front of the public who has access to their restrooms, and they don't have their own private place to get dressed with, and their stuff is left unattended in the restroom that is public to the community, which is very concerning to me as a parent, but also, it should be concerning to us as a district. I would love for somebody to look into that, and I'll follow up with that as well. But tonight I come, I wanted to say a couple things, because after knocking on thousands of doors and talking with thousands of people, the community has made it very clear they wanted to have a voice in their children's education. They want to know what's being taught. They want to support teachers and schools, but they also want transparency about the curriculum. That has been a big struggle. Um, we have saved our district, honestly, from a lot of lawsuits. Dr. Enfield, you know one in particular, um, that was recent. There's a lawsuit going on in another district. We did the exact same mistake, but yet, we chose not to go into that lawsuit. There's plenty of examples that we have like that, and I'm proud of our community for doing that, because we didn't want to enter into these lawsuits despite what is being plastered on social media, but I'm, I'm proud of them, because they never gave up, and they just took the good route. I'm not a seasoned politician, of course. I say words wrong. If you wanted to look it up, it's on YouTube, they make fun of me. I've never been up here to be a seasoned politician. I didn't go to school for this. I never intended to do anything but to serve my community when I saw a need. With that, I can say I'm incredibly thankful for seeing so many of our community members, teachers, our staff, our board members, and our, some of our cabinet members as well, working together despite any challenges you have faced. You never gave up, you persevered. You showed our kids that, what it was to fight for what is right. You showed them how and what it means to never, ever give up. I want to say how incredibly proud I am, and how proud I am of our own kids. Our very own kids were out on the streets knocking doors and telling their story, and I honestly am taken back, my heart is full by every time I think of that. This has been an emotional roller coaster, and it's just so amazing to see the community come together. I'm grateful for the love and the support to help make sure our kids are the focus, again, as they always should have been. Despite the heavy amounts of money and the support coming from Washington DC, and God knows where else, the community never gave up. They never lost hope. They joined together, and they worked harder. For that, I love you guys. I am grateful, I'm thankful, I'm looking forward to the opportunity if God presents it, and I will, I will make sure that I continue to represent all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Naomi Minogue, followed by Michael Apollinar, followed by Kim Grapton.
Good evening, President Gagne, Superintendent Enfield, board members, cabinet members, student rep. I'm here to express my sincere appreciation to Mr. Bridge, especially Mr. Schaefer tonight, and President Gagne. Thank you for your professionalism, for your dedication to all the members of our community. Um, apparently, we have non-normal students, as well as normal students, but you served all of them with grace and dignity, and for that, I am especially grateful. During the last term, you remain dignified and professional in the face of unimaginable behavior by adult members in our community. But you weren't going to please everyone, and that's not what your job is to do, to please everyone. Your job is to follow board policy, your job is to follow school, state, local mandates, which you did in the face of adversity. You had to basically build the plane while you flew it. You kept us safe, and we appreciate so much of what you did. I want to encourage Mr. Schaefer and President Gagne to please... I want to encourage Mr. Schaefer and President Gagné to please continue to be voices in our community. We appreciate you, and we know that we haven't seen the last of either of you. Our district is a better place because of you. Thank you, Dr. Enfield, for staying strong. Thank you for not kowtowing to anger, to misinformation, to bullying, to personal agendas. My hope is that the board moves forward in unity and continues to work with the students, to work with the teachers, and to work with parents. I'm asking all of the community members who are at home and who are here in the board meetings to continue to remain vigilant and continue to attend and follow board meetings to educate yourself. It is more important now than ever to stay informed and active. There will always be a place in our community for Mr. Schaefer and for President Gagné. We will always welcome any student, any teacher, any family in our district, regardless of personal ideologies, regardless of personal religious preferences, or what you feel about gender identities. Our students, our teachers, our families deserve to feel welcomed. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Michael Apollinar, followed by Kim Grappington, followed by Mindy Stamp.
I'm going to start with a little video that captures the message I gave to you, Gagné, and all the you, Schaefer, last year. To protect our children and deny parents their God-given right to make medical decisions for their children, you will face a political reckoning. I can assure you that you will be removed from the board seat by this, by these parents in the audience, you mark my words. There will be election consequences in 2022. The day of reckoning is coming. Thank you. I made that message to all of you on this side, because you were ignoring parents. You were ignoring district employees, stakeholders, of course, children, with your servitude to Gavin Newsom, and all the folks supporting mandates for vaccine and masks. And now, guess what? The scientists come out, and guess who was right? The people that were challenging the status quo at the time, like many of you. Well, now, guess what? The 800-pound gorilla, nobody wants to see it, but you were defeated. You're gone. That's why you're not running, and you're next. Parents have spoken, the silent majority. I'll tell you, wait, wait till la gente mexicana latina in this district start to understand from what Sonia and her campaign did to educate, the perversion being taught to our students, they're going to demand that it go away. And this was just the beginning, but you're gone. That's why your husband spoke tonight, because you're finished, and he had to at least say his goodbye to you. And I'm, I'm just thrilled. But, you know, I want to not make this such a, we told you so. I had to make it clear that we warned you, and it happened. However, I do understand there are people in the community that don't agree with our position, and I can say going forward, when Sonia comes into power and John Monroe, we will listen. We want to hear what the community has to say. However, the parents' voice will now be respected. Thank you.
Kim Grappington, followed by Mindy Stamp. What? Excuse me? Yes.
So I'm going to first start out by saying, I gave a speech in December about my daughter's assault. Me and my daughter got up here in June, we gave that speech to her heartfelt assault that she stood up here, talked about. Some parents out here want to tell me that I'm using scare tactics. Well, let me just tell you, for the lack of stuff that you did as a president, for the lack of care that you gave as a retired police officer, your San Bernardino DA's office pressed charges on those two girls, just so you know. And you know what they said to me when I went to go get the full restraining orders? What did your school board do? That wasn't an open door for you to be like, hey, I'm a retired cop, whatever you are, I don't know if retired medically, what it was, to come up to me to, when you guys were up here, my daughter gave her speech, this is what you did. You didn't even look at her. You're supposed to represent our children, that ain't representing. So I'm going to say, Christina, I have nothing to say to you. You're out. You, good. You, no, the community has spoken, and it is time for you to go. 25 out of 25 precincts, 100% ballots, 30 out of 30 for John Monroe. Bye. Bye. Thank you so much.
Mindy Stamp, Champ.
Hi there, good evening. Thank you for taking the time. I wasn't planning to talk, but I wanted to thank you, board members who may not be returning. Thank you for looking out for the students. Thank you for hearing me as a parent. I want to talk to the board members that are sitting and introduce myself. My name's Mindy, and I have four children in this district, and as a parent, I would like my voice to be heard. I'm an adoptive mom. Three of my children are black, one is Latino, and just this week, two of my black boys in junior high were called a decapitated N-word and die N-word, and this is a regular weekly recurrence, and this is one of the reasons I feel very passionate about ethnic studies and my children's history and my children's culture being something that's celebrated, maybe for us adults. These things have become political, but I'm just a parent who's advocating for my children, and I would like my children to be heard and my voice to be heard as well. It is unfair that your children and your children are going to school with my children, making them feel unsafe, threatening them, making them feel less than, making them feel devalued, and until that doesn't happen, we will say Black Lives Matter, because until their lives are the same, until they're not being called a decapitated N-word every single week, then I will continue to come up here with my shaking voice and to speak up, so everyone knows I'm not here to be political. We adults need to behave. This is embarrassing. There are children watching, and there are children suffering in this district because of these messages that all of us adults can do better at. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We are now at item number two. We don't have, excuse me, item 1F, changes and deletions. Pat, are there any changes or deletions?
The following changes on the agenda. Item 2D5, award of bid number 22-23-07F, Eagle Canyon Elementary School alterations, bid package 31-01. Under bid package, correct the word "biles" to read "piles."
Thank you. We are now at item 2, consent. Pat, are there any speakers on consent items?
There is one on item 2B2.
All right.
Darlene Berg.
Hi again. I'm going to represent the not normals. It was pretty disappointing, and the last meeting, hearing Mr. Andrew Cruz have such an issue with the Drag Queen Bingo at the, it was so much of an issue that he stormed off and never came back to listen to public comment, as is required of him as a board member. An issue with a fundraiser that has helped hundreds of organizations raise a total of $200,000 since 2016. For having such an issue, I wonder how much you have raised, Mr. Cruz. To act like Don Lugo has intentions of hurting or grooming students while having a fundraiser, as you referenced, for their grad night is ignorant. Drag Queen Bingo is at a restaurant open to all ages and families. As stated by the organizer on their website, Drag Queen Bingo is a fun event for all ages, and they are specific about making it family-friendly, keeping it appropriate for all audiences. If parents want to take their children to Drag Queen Bingo, they get to do that. For example, I won't eat at Chick-fil-A for their anti-LGBTQ contributions, but I'm not protesting the fundraisers the schools do at Chick-fil-A. They're doing a good thing. They're helping to raise money for all of our students and youth, and that's the beauty of the public school system. We all have the choice to attend or not attend. What we should focus on is the caring and committed people that are doing good things for our students. Parents and adults are teaching these young people how to respect and include all types of people, regardless of gender identity, orientation, religion, race, or where they come from. I did hear a video of what that pastor at Calvary Chapel, Chino Hills, said about having the congregation call and disapprove of the Bingo fundraiser because it was in Ontario. We should be so appreciative of the fact that other cities are welcoming and helping each other out. I wish that those of you who believe that LGBTQ+ do not deserve the same rights, that those of you who believe other religions don't deserve to be recognized, and that those of you who believe that all races are not created equal could take a moment to truly see how the world around you is coexisting, and that we all want to do the best we can for our children. I have to believe you all want what's best for our young people as well. So I ask that you remember, there are incredible people who come from all walks of life. I ask that unless a fundraiser is going to preach hate and violence, then take it for what it is, something that good people put together to raise money for our students, all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you.